Thank you ladies.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now I'll bow our heads please. Dear heaven and father, we come before you this morning just giving thanks. Thanks for all your mercy, your grace, and all the blessings that you have bestowed upon us. Now we ask you to guide us through this meeting, give us the patient, understanding, and the know-how how to make the best decisions for our county as well as for the citizens of this county. This is my prayer. Amen.
If everybody would please remain standing for the Harnett County Heroes Remembrance presentation.
James W. Charlton III, First Lieutenant, Silver Star. For gallantry in action in the Republic of Vietnam, Lieutenant Charlton distinguished himself while serving as the platoon leader of the mortar platoon and company E, First Battalion, 506th Infantry Regiment, 101st Airborne Division, Air Mobile. During combat operations in the A Shaw Valley, Republic of Vietnam, company E started to receive incoming mortar rounds on a hilltop where it was setting up a night defensive perimeter. Lieutenant Charlton resolutely moved through the shrapnel to reach his platoon's position. Throughout the ensuing attack, he personally directed his men in setting up counter-mortar fire. During the attack, he was severely wounded. Despite his wound, he refused to be medically evacuated as he encouraged his men to level retaliatory fire against the insurgents. With complete disregard for his own safety, he dragged several of his wounded comrades to safety. It was not until the mortar attack had ended that he allowed himself to be evacuated. His courageous efforts were an inspiration to the men of his platoon. Lieutenant Charlton's personal bravery and devotion to duty were in keeping with the highest traditions of the military service and reflect great credit upon himself, his unit, and the United States Army. On December 1st, 2025, your name and citation that appear on the Harnett County Wall of Heroes and will remain so forever as part of the history of Harnett County is being duly recognized for your act of heroism while serving in the United States Armed Forces. We, as a county, come together to commend you for your actions and dedication to this great nation. Thank you.
Can I take a moment?
Yes, sir, please.
Vice Chairman, members of the commission, this is not just a homie. I wouldn't be here performing for the men with whom I serve. And first of all, I'd like to thank anybody that has been in the military and served, and especially through the law enforcement and safety personnel who are in this camp. They are superb. I know that because I've seen it for the past eight years with my wife. She needed some of these services. They've always been. A little, just to comment real quick, I'm standing here to represent the men with whom I serve. I do. Actually, from the public. Comment. Two years ago, I met a young lady up in New Jersey through my wife who has a story of when she was a military commander. So I've been going to a couple of reunions with the men whom I served with. And we put together a book. I'm going to take this down stairs and put it in the library. Don't let it collaborate. She wrote this book. It came out in April. It's about the men with whom I serve, and it's their stories. And so all the proceeds from the book are going to the Vietnam War Foundation. There is no personal gain here whatsoever. But I'm honored to be here. I thank you very much, and you honor my men, not just me. Thank you very much.
Okay, at this time, I'll consider any additions or additions to the published agenda.
Motion for agenda is presented.
Motion, and the second to approve the published agenda is there in the discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Agenda passes. All right. This time, I'll open the floor for a public comment period. Public comment period consists of 30 minutes. Each presenter will have three minutes to present. First on list, I have Mr. Eric Stevenson. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, everyone. Hope you had your coffee already. Y'all had your coffee yet? Yeah? I did. I can't survive without it.
Working on it.
Working on it, all right. But I'm Eric Stevenson. I live at 100 Valley Street Road, and today I'm here really as a son and as a caregiver for my mother that we recently moved her here because she's dealing with dementia. And I found out that there are only two social workers that can do in-home visits for the elderly. And I know we're a county of over 100,000, and our elderly population, our population overall, is growing. And I just don't think two social workers to cover the great county that we have is sufficient at this time. And I just kind of want to just talk about how my family were looking for resources, and we're pretty resourceful. You know, we know how to use the internet and go and talk to people. And it was kind of difficult and confusing to really find the resources that we were able to find for my mother. So my question is kind of if it's difficult for resourceful people to find the resources, imagine how difficult it could be for our seniors that don't have the ability or even the cognitive ability to search out resources. So I'm kind of asking the board to look at increasing the staffing for the in-home visits for the elderly, also improve our outreach and communication so our seniors and caregivers actually know where to turn. So on the outreach, there are a lot of low-cost, high-impact ways that we can get the word out, you know, inserts on water bills, electric bills, targeted digital ads that show up where senior adult children are. Because us adult children are finding ourselves making these decisions, so put the information where we are. Simple TV ads, flyers, info sheets, pharmacies, doctors' offices, senior centers, we should just really spread the word, churches wherever we can. And I'm not here to criticize anyone in any way because the social workers that I've met are doing a really, really good job. I'm just respectfully asking that you, you know, just take a look at the current caseloads and even bring back some recommendations for the additional positions and even develop a better communication plan so that every senior and caregiver in Harnett County knows what's available. You know, our seniors raised us, they nurtured us, and they fought for us, and it's time for us to do the same for them. Because I know one day I'm going to be that person that I'm talking about right now. And I pray that the resources are available. And dementia is a hard thing to deal with for the person and for the family. So I'm asking for your prayers and whatever we can do as a county to increase awareness for the resources. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Larry Mitchell. Good morning, sir.
Morning, commissioners, county manager. My name's Larry Mitchell, 478 Century Drive in Cameron, Lexington Plantation. This year, we wrap up 2025. I'd like to recognize it's been 50 years since we evacuated Vietnam. Time goes fast. I thank you for the Heroes Remembrance because every time we present those, I bring back memories also from my time over there. December is a special month for the season. We got holidays coming up. I'd like to recognize that emergency services, the sheriff's office, the fire, 911 Center, EMS, and animal control, they work during the holidays, and we need to pay attention to that. Separation of family, of course, you know, they're called on duty. The military is just like that also. We've been called on duty during the holidays. I'd like you to consider a proposal, maybe on a limited time, a five for five. If the comment period list is less than five people, please consider five minutes. If it's over five, then go to three minutes. But it gives us time to have the first five talk about a topic more in depth. Time really goes fast. So I'd like to thank all the county employees. They're very proficient in their duties. They come to work with a task in hand and ready to perform for the citizens of our county. I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Edwina Wallace.
Good morning, ma'am.
Good morning. I am here as a concerned parent. My son got jumped at Jack Marley Park on Saturday, November 22nd by a Hispanic gang. And I had no idea that was even a such thing here in Harnett County. I come here to live like an easy, safe life, and my son was targeted, and they beat him up pretty bad. And I'm just wondering, what are you guys doing about the gang violence or, you know, going to school? My son does not want to go to school. He's scared. And I'm scared. Like, they are really intimidating. So that's just my concern. I just hope that you guys are doing something about it.
Thank you.
Right, at this time, I will close the floor for a public comment period. All right, at this time, I will close the floor for a public comment period. Move on. Do I hear a motion for the consent agenda?
A motion, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Here's your name, Ms. Madam Clerk. Okay, at this time, we will now recess and reconvene for reorganization of the board to select a chairman and vice chairman for this upcoming year. Ms. Melissa Capps.
All right. If you guys are ready, we'll reconvene. Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
Pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 153A, 39.3, and Rule 5 of the Rules of Procedure, the Board of Commissioners shall select a chairman and vice chairman at its first regular meeting in December of each year. At this time, I'd like to open the floor for nominations.
Ms. Melissa, for chairman, I would like to nominate Commissioner Eddie Jaggers.
If there are no other nominations, is there a motion to close nominations?
A motion, ma'am.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second on the floor to close nominations. All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carried unanimously. At this time, I'd like to call for a vote. Please raise your hand if you would like to vote for Commissioner Jaggers as chairman. Okay? We have four voting in favor, so congratulations, Chairman Jaggers. Okay. At this time, I'd like to open the floor for nominations for vice chairman.
Madam Clerk, I'd like to nominate Vice Chair.
Second.
If there are no other nominations, is there a motion to close nominations?
So move.
Second.
There's a motion and a second on the floor to close nominations. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four to one. And at this time, I'd like for you to raise your hand if you're voting for Commissioner Nickel to be vice chairman. All right. We have four in favor, so congratulations, Commissioner Nickel or Vice Chairman Nickel. At this time, I'm going to turn the meeting back over to Chairman Jaggers.
Um, ma'am, tell me.
Yes.
Let me make a statement, please.
Okay.
I don't care who serves, any positions up here, but I think there's going to have to be a decision for someone here on this board and in this county to look at the process. I don't think the process has been done right. Never been done right since we inherited this board. So that's something I promised to do, to look into what's going on here, because it's totally unfair to not include all the commissioners into the decision of who serves as chair on this board. I don't want it. I don't want to serve as chair. But that's a statement that I'm going to make and making it for the public. Thank you.
Ma'am, I'd like to make a statement. You will say that you do not want to be chair or hold any of these positions.
You have my ass.
Ma'am, I'm speaking. Right now, you just publicly stated it. You state it every single year, and then you'll go ahead and not vote, and you will not do your duty as a chairman up here and vote when you're supposed to.
I'm not voting super because the process is not done right, and I will never vote until the process is fine and done thoroughly. So that is my statement. Whether I want to serve or not, the process should be done right, and the public knows it because the public looks on this board and what's happening here in Harnett County on this board. So, and anybody that think he's going to run is going to be in a different Europe. This board is not, consists of four, four people. This board is consists of five people, and it wouldn't be me as a representative of my constituents not to say what's going on and what's right and what's wrong. And I'm telling you, I'm going to look into it. Whether I say yes, I want to serve or not, it doesn't matter. It doesn't matter. Every citizen in this county have seen and noticed what's going on in this county, and it's totally wrong. I'm going to speak out. I don't care who y'all. That's me, and that's how I serve my constituents in this county for what's right and what's wrong for them as well as for me. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'll turn it back over to Chairman Jaggers.
All right. Item number eight, public hearing for proposed text amendment to the Harnett County Historic Preservation Orders.
Good morning, Chairman. Good morning, board. Just wanted to open this up for public hearing regarding the changes to the Historic Preservation Orders of Harnett County that previously presented the changes to you before, mainly being they're changing it to the Historic Preservation Heritage Tourism Commission, giving some additional duties that evolve around tourism and in making updates that make it compliant with 160D. So I would just ask, open this up for public comment and then for adoption. Thank you.
We're now open for public comment. Anybody got it, want to speak about this? Seeing no one wants to speak, public comment is closed.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the proposed text amendment change.
I have a motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favors?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number nine, considering appointment to Harnett County First Responders Advisory Committee.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make two nominations. Number one is Robert Thomas, and the other, Ms. Victoria Hall for District Five.
I have a motion for Robert Thomas and Victoria Hall. Victoria Hall.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion on these two? Hearing none. All in favors, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries for Robert Thomas and Victoria Hall. Any further action in these committees? Committee.
There's one taken for District One, and I will make the decision, I have made the decision. Check into Larry, information on Larry.
Can you repeat that, ma'am?
I said, would you look and check into the information on Larry, what he wanted to do?
Yeah, so what we're looking at, we're investigating options for EMS departments. Is that what you're referring to?
Right.
Right. So what we're looking at is trying to figure out what is the right level to look at appointment because he was the director and trying to go look at the right levels to find somebody that understands the operations, but that's not part of the upper management team. So that's what we're looking at. Or are you referring to Larry Smith that's on your list?
Right.
Yeah, so in his role, he is not part of the EMS, so as an employee, he could serve in that position as a citizen related to his position on that based on his position with the city being different.
Okay. But then to, a question I'd like to ask now is time for me to make the decision on this District One, is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
He would serve in your District One position, not in any capacity as an employee.
Well, I know Larry. I know him real well. He have served this county really well, so I think that he would be my representative on that.
Do I have a second on it? Hearing no second, the motion fails. Any further action?
Well, if the motion fails, simply because I'm making a recommendation, I will make another recommendation, and that is for, because it's time for us to move on from this and I'm keen to. I will make a motion on Brian then. I would, my motion would be for Brian to serve on this, because he live in Littleton, and I understand he has great experience in this position, so that is my motion.
Second. Done motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, chairman, please aye.
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 Motion carries. All right, moving on to number 10, county manager report.
Thank you, Chairman. So today, I have a couple of items. The first one I want to mention is that as part of the budget, we are proceeding forward with hiring a consultant company in order to do a compensation study, something that we're trying to do every three years to ensure that our salaries that we're paying our employees is consistent with our neighboring peers to ensure that we're on the right level in order to retain staff. So that has started. We're hiring Pontefex Consulting to begin that work at a price of $22,750, and it will be about seven weeks to complete that study, which will fit in our timeline in order to ensure that any salary recommendations that we want to make will be able to be included within the operating budget recommendation. So just wanted to make you aware of that, that decision and that project's moving forward. Today, you received your capital improvement budget books. We will be going over those in detail at the next meeting. Assistant County Manager McFadden will cover in detail the items that we have. We have some new ones, some items that we're looking at doing some feasibility studies to determine cost for projects in the future, but it is a project list that will continue to move our county forward. So we'll review that in more detail at the next meeting. I also need to have approval, motion to approve budget amendments as requested by the finance director.
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
And also a motion to authorize the chairman to sign contract amendments exceeding the manager's signature at the threshold.
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's all I have, Chairman.
All right. Item number 11, new business. I'll try to bring up one thing, and I'm not asking for a vote on it today or anything. I just want to put it out there. I like Mr. Larry's suggestion on five and five. If you have five or less, go into five minutes. I have no problem with that, but I'm not asking for a vote on it. If you want to vote on it, that's fine, but we want to consider that maybe. I don't agree with five minutes for the whole list, but when you have five or less, I think that is a good idea, but that's just my opinion. Anybody have anything else want to say on that?
Yes, I do. I think the motion, the motion that Larry made is a great suggestion, but I think it needs to be discussed by all the board, and then we make up a decision when we come back to make the decision on the timeframe and how much time we're allowed for that. Does that sound decent, Larry? Does that sound decent?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay?
We all have to be unanimous of when this change happens.
That's why I wanted to get it out and talk about it first before we ever even think about going down the other road. Anybody else have anything to say about?
I don't have a problem with that idea. I think it's great, but since we all...
I understand that we do not have a need for closed session, so I'll entertain a motion.
I'm making a motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
So am I.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.